So this is, um, this is a nonpartisan position. County Commission Position Number Two. I do appreciate you letting me moderate this. It's a, it's, it's an honor to be in front of three people who really are putting themselves out there. I don't know how many of you have run for office before, but it is, uh, it is not about fame and glory and money and all that good stuff. It is about concern and care for the community. And so my hat is off to all three of you for putting yourselves out there the way you're doing tonight and for the remainder of this campaign. Uh, I do have one announcement to make because I think when we walked in the door, we were probably, a lot of us expecting to see four people up there. But Brian Huntimer has decided to drop out of the race. He made that decision this morning and we found out this morning to, uh, at the station that he was doing that. And that he is putting his support behind Rob Imhoff. So I'll make that, uh, put that out there. He is here in the audience, so, uh, you're, you're not allowed to, to jump in at any point. So you, you may, yeah. Okay. Very good. So, uh, we are, are going to talk to these candidates about a number of critical issues facing the county right now. This is a candidate's race and, and for a little bit more on the process here, if one of these candidates in May gets better than 50% of the vote, that will be your commissioner. If one candidate doesn't get better than 50% of the vote, then it is a runoff between the vote, the top getters in May. And that will take place in the fall with the regular election. So keep that in mind. The candidates are Phil Chang, who is our current Position Two Commissioner, Rob Imhoff in the, in the center there, and Judy Trigo. Again, thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. The candidates have one minute for opening remarks and a minute and a half to answer each of the questions that, uh, that we all have come up with. And then they'll get a two-minute closing statement at the end. This is going to run about an hour and 15 minutes total. For the opening statement and for the questions, we have chosen the names randomly and then we'll just make that shift as we go. So the person who answered first on one question will answer second or third on the next and so on and so forth. So we make it as fair as we can. We begin with Commissioner Chang and your opening statement.
First off, thanks to the League and the City Club for hosting this forum tonight. My name's Phil Chang and I have been honored to work on housing, land and water conservation, mental health care, and many other community priorities as your county commissioner for the last three years. I'm a pragmatic problem solver. I worked with the Central Oregon Builders Association to create a missing middle grant program to construct more workforce housing. I got the county behind the Measure 110 reform package proposed by Oregon's district attorneys, sheriffs, police chiefs, and cities that just passed in the legislature. And I secured state funding to reduce conflicts between ranchers and wolves by compensating for and preventing livestock depredation. None of these actions would have gotten to a two-vote majority on the Board of Commissioners without me. That's why the Independent Party of Oregon, oh, thanks.
Thank you. And, uh, next on that question, Ms. Trigo?
Thank you for having me. My name is Judy Trigo and I am seeking the office of Deschutes County Commissioner, Position Number Two, because I have the qualifications, skills, and temperament to do the job. I've lived in central Oregon for 30 years. I am the Executive Director of a Rural Chamber of Commerce and I am the founder of a nonprofit organization that helps people of limited means. I have many years of experience working at all levels of government. I'm actually a former elected official. I was elected city councillor and served as council president. And I've been a long-term volunteer in the community. I am a, on the Deschutes County Budget Committee, served on the Hord of Oregon Corps Board. I have been appointed by three different county commissioners for boards over the last 20 years, including the Deschutes County Commission on Children and Families. And I served a U.S. Congressperson managing constituent services and worked for a senator at the Oregon Capitol. Thank you.
And Ms. Trigo, I want to apologize for butchering your name the first time around. I was calling you Trigo because I was going by someone else's pronunciation that I heard.
You know, I'll answer to any of that.
Okay, good.
A lot of people call me that.
You and me both. I, I get all kinds of pronunciations. Mr. Imhoff, go ahead.
My name is Rob Imhoff and I'm running for the Deschutes County Commissioner, Position Two as well. Uh, I am, uh, I'd like to thank the League of Voters and City Club, David for moderating, Central Oregon Daily News for hosting it. So I, I just want to start with my why. Uh, I am a father, I am a grandfather. I love my family, I love my kids, and I see the future for my children and my grandchildren growing dimwitted by the day. And I had, um, I'm Norwegian in heritage and I don't know how, if you know how the Vikings won, but they burned their ships. And they knew that they had to fight and that was the only way forward is they had to win to be able to take the territory and come home. That is the passion that I run with. Um, I look forward to an opportunity to meet up and have conversations with anyone. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be here. So thank you.
Thank you all. Let's start with this question. Um, I'm not sure if all of you know it, but this county has a pretty substantial budget. It's $400 million. It's a lot of money. It's a lot of departments. It's a lot of money going out to different organizations and different assets. What is it that gives you the expertise, or maybe it's life experience, to handle that kind of financial obligation as someone who heads the county? And we'll start with you, Mr. Imhoff, again.
Ooh. I'm just figuring out your pattern. Okay, so, um, first of all, why do I have expertise in that area for a budget? I've owned my own business for 22 years and I have, one of the things that you know if you run your own business is if you don't balance your budget, you go broke. Unfortunately, I think that we have seen many examples in government where the solution to running out of money is just get more. Um, I don't have that luxury and I intend to, as a commissioner, follow those same principles and rather than dipping my hand in someone's pocket because there's not a dollar that comes into government without pulling it out of someone's pocket. That's how government gets funded. So when we know that, and, and we all know that, and today being Tax Day, in honor of that, um, I would just say, I think that there's a lot of us who are looking for a different path forward. We're looking for someone who has principles and someone who knows and is really good at math and accounting and someone who ultimately has a, feels responsibility to see our county prosper. Uh, life experience, I've said, expertise, I just have found in my life, there's, I've gone through so many situations, countless situations, that have taught me how to be a leader, how to be a team player, and, um, how to just honestly have a good time, love people, be a happy warrior. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trigo, uh, when we talk about a $400 million budget for county, uh, tell me what, what it is about your expertise, your life experience that gives you the ability to run that.
Thank you. It's a $723 million budget. When you back out the districts, it's 400 million. I currently sit on the Deschutes County Budget Committee. I was the Vice Chair of the Budget Committee when I was on City Council. I was the Chair of the Urban Renewal Committee. And my former boss, who was a senator, was on the Ways and Means Committee when he was in office. So I spent a lot of time going over those budgets as well. I have a pretty good handle on the Deschutes County budget. And there are times, there are required services, required shared services, where you do need to partner with the state and federal governments to bring in funding to make things happen. As an example, I was able to raise $15 million. I assisted with the lobbying on that effort to expand the Deschutes County courthouse. Things like that are really important to Deschutes County. We need to have cooperative partnerships with state and federal government to be able to get things done. The county can't get this, these things done on their own. The nonprofits can't get these things done on their own. So we really need to work together to make these things happen. Thank you.
Mr. Chang, same question.
So prior to serving on the Board of Commissioners, um, in a past life, I was a, a nonprofit director, um, that lived substantially on the revenue that we generated from providing services to, to community members, um, doing creek restoration and stream bank stabilization work. Just before I became a commissioner, I ran a public program for the state focused on federal forest management. That was about $20 million. And, um, when I came to the county, I set about learning about the huge array of services that the county provides. And looking at each one of those, I asked the question, are these wasteful spending or are these strategic investments? What it takes to serve well on the Board of Commissioners, to be a good Budget Committee member, is being able to tell the difference between those two. What is, what is a key investment in a service that we need that's going to save us a whole bunch of money downstream? And what is unnecessary spending? Uh, and that is exactly what I've been working on for the last three years, serving as your commissioner. I'd also just like to say that, um, our past commissioners in 2017, 2018 saddled us with a liability by reducing assessed property tax rates, an amount that is insignificant to me as a property owner, but was hugely important in, um, our budget in the last few years.
Thank you. The next question, and we'll start with you, Mr. Chang, for this one as well. How can the county improve on its handling of the homeless crisis? I know this is a very, very broad question.
Yeah.
So be as specific as you want, be as broad as you want.
For me, homeless response starts with the question of who the homeless are. Because we have an incredibly, incredible diversity of homeless populations. And if you don't work with each one the right way, they don't progress out of homelessness. One of my opponents has taken to using the phrase homeless tourism, uh, to which I want to ask the question, uh, the 600-plus public school kids in our community who are homeless, are they homeless tourists? The 10% of our homeless population that are veterans, are they homeless tourists? The working people who go to work every morning and then go home every night to a car to sleep, are they homeless tourists? What we know from the point in time count in Deschutes County and central Oregon is that the vast majority of homeless people in our community are long-term Central Oregonians. And they need pathways out of homelessness, a safe place to lay their head and to pull their life together, and the wraparound services and accountability to get themselves on track. That's how we fix homelessness, not by talking about homeless tourists.
Mr. Imhoff, how would you improve the county's handling of the homeless situation here?
Well, I guess I'm the one that he's talking about that called homeless tourism a thing. Uh, let me start with explaining why I cite that as a thing. Anytime you go somewhere from somewhere else, intent to visit, but also your reasons why matter. So if you're coming to central Oregon because you're just here because, hey, I love central Oregon, I just want to come, I love it, great. Welcome. Let's figure out how to help you be a contributing member, just like everybody else that lives here. If you're coming here because of the freebies that you get, that's a homeless tourist. If you come from somewhere else to here to get free things, or because the drug laws might be more lax, or any number of other reasons, that's not the same thing as taking care of our friends and neighbors in Deschutes County. If you're a Deschutes County resident, that is what the funding is supposed to be for. It's not supposed to be for the people that came in from Florida because they could make meth in the hotel room. They're here for a very specific reason. They're, they're here and they're homeless because of any number of reasons. So really, my point was, we need to figure out why people are here, to, to Mr. Chang's point. And then at the end of the day, hey, the, the solutions are, we need to give them, we need to not enable them, but empower them to move out of homelessness and move into contributing members of society. However they get there, whatever that bottom looks like, that's, that's undetermined. But I think we have to be compassionate and we have to be kind through the process. Thank you.
Ms. Trigo?
Thank you. We must have compassion on the people living in this situation. There are four different types of homelessness. Hidden are couch surfers. Transitional is the most common, made up those, of those who have lost employment and just need temporary shelter. Episodic is those experiencing three periods of homelessness in one year. And chronic is someone who's been homeless for, continuously for a year or more. So we must keep those on the brink of homelessness, from becoming homeless through prevention programs. We need to prioritize our county resources and we must move unsanctioned camping off of public land. It's inhumane for those living in this situation. It's untenable for neighboring property owners and it's detrimental to our environment. We need a variety of housing types and options, including designating eligible county land for moving from homelessness into emergency shelters, transitional and supportable housing, affordable rentals, and then up to affordable homeownership. We also need to increase our workforce training programs and get those folks who are families working off of the streets. That's low-hanging fruit. I will support service providers like Lighthouse Navigation Center, Oasis Village, the Mountain View Parking Program, and I will work with altruistic developers to create a model development that addresses these four types of homelessness.
A related question in many ways, but I'll let you all decide how you want to approach this one. But how can the county work better with individual communities, individual cities, to deal with these crises, whether it's fentanyl, whether it's homelessness, whatever it might be? Some of you did get specific on the homeless question. This might be an opportunity to, to go even deeper, but that partnership seems to be agreed upon as the best approach, maybe the only way, uh, to create a successful approach to deal with this crisis. And again, Ms. Trigo, we're going to start with you.
Thank you. I have a long track record of partnering with cities and communities to get things done. One of the ways you don't do it is to call a community an example of a failed community if they don't have it come up with a location to ho, house a homeless shelter. I think that that is not an approach I would take. We have the CHURRO Board, which is a group of board members from each city and the county who are working together. It was a bit of a clunky start, but they, I think they've got it together enough. They're starting to work together to come up with solutions for these problems in each community. The county is doing a great job working with Redmond and Redmond's homeless count actually went down when the rest of the county went up 10%. So working with Lupine, Sisters, Redmond, the outlying communities is critical for the future of this problem and we can solve it.
All right. Mr. Chang?
Yeah, um, I would pick up where, where Judy left off, uh, talking about the city of Redmond. This year's point in time count for the, the three-county region showed that the two places where homelessness went down and where unsheltered homelessness went down significantly were the cities of Bend and the city of Redmond. Why did homelessness, homelessness go down in these places? Why did unsheltered homelessness plummet in these places? Because they are leaning into the problem. They are providing those pathways out of homelessness, the places for people to lay their head at night, safe parking, congregate shelters, tiny house villages. And they are providing the services that people need to walk the pathway out of homelessness and the accountability and the case management. So that's the answer, is, is providing those things, providing those pathways out of homelessness. The county should be working very closely with our, our cities and our, our unincorporated communities on addressing these issues, leaning in and partnering the way that the county has done in some cases with the city of Bend and the city of Redmond to accomplish the results that I just described. Some of that we can do through the Coordinated Homeless Response Office, CHURRO, as, as Judy called it, and some of it we can do in one-on-one relationships with communities. Thanks.
Mr. Imhoff?
A couple of things. The detox centers are something that have gotten some notoriety recently. We don't have enough facilities for detox centers and I believe that we keep missing this connection. Not everyone who's homeless is a drug addict or an alcoholic. Not everybody who's homeless is mentally ill, but there's a large percentage that are. And I feel like, even, we keep referring to the point in time count, the point in time count is not always accurate. Because those people, and there's got to be cooperation to want to be counted. And I know there's people that dodge it. How do I know this? Because I have friends that are homeless in Deschutes County. I've got friends that are homeless that, I just ran into one of them at lunch, hadn't seen him in years. Um, it's very personal for me. And so when I am, with my, when my position is dismissed, I would tell you that I actually have personal effect by homelessness. I have a nephew who's currently homeless in Portland. Um, I have, uh, reached out numerously and had relationships with some of the, the people that are currently homeless in Deschutes County. Because I don't, I, if I don't know who they are and I don't know their story, then it's impossible for me to have compassion on them and they're just another number. And they've been treated that way and they often feel that way. And they're often enabled to continue in it and that's what they're hoping to fight against. So with that being said, um, we have to have more facilities to treat people and then we have to have some laws with teeth that mandate treatment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This may or may not be a related question to what we've just been talking about. That's kind of up to you. But do you support the idea of long-term RV parking on private lands here in Deschutes County? And if you could, be specific as to why or, or why not. Mr. Chang, we'll start with you.
So the, the legislature just presented us with an option to do this House Bill 1013. So at this point, the county can choose to enable rural property owners to be able to long-term host a tenant RV on their property. There might be thousands of, of properties in, rural, rural properties in Deschutes County that are eligible for this. I think it's a very exciting idea. I think it would add housing options to, uh, you know, to our, our current portfolio that we have in Deschutes County. I also think it needs to be done very carefully because we have a whole lot of people who are, are really concerned about code violations on their neighbor's properties in rural Deschutes County. Seen all kinds of terrible things with, with, um, solid waste, with human waste, et cetera. And, um, if we don't pursue this opportunity very carefully and set it upright, not just with the right rules, but with the right monitoring and enforcement, um, if people are violating the rules, then it could have really negative impacts on those neighbors. Uh, and we, we want this opportunity to be able to provide transitional housing for a whole lot of people in our community.
All right. And we'll go to you, Mr. Imhoff.
Uh, can I, one point of clarification? You said long-term RV parking on private lands, correct?
Private lands.
Okay. I just want to make sure we weren't talking about long-term RV parking on public lands because we kind of know what that looks like.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. So, um, I think it's important, one of the current projects that's being proposed in, in Redmond across from the airport is, is a piece of land that, there's, there's some conditional approvals on it now, but the concern when you look at it is access. Um, I have seen some of the RVs that are being camped in and I know that not all of them are roadworthy. And when you start to, and I, I have multiple times driven 26 to and from, um, Prineville and I will tell you that if someone pulled out in a vehicle at that location and did not, was not able to get up to speed, I think it creates a secondary issue. So one of the big things about private land, if you're going to do that, is access. Oversight is another big one. You got to make sure that you have someone on site that's responsible, that understands the, the situation enough to be able to manage it and truly manage it. I'm not saying that I know, you know, who that person is or what particular organization might be best handled to do that, but I know that that really matters. It also matters that you have some rules. And if you do not have rules, and, and, because rules act as constraints and those act as protections from the neighboring landowners and also the other people that want to call that place home. So if you don't have, it's the low barrier versus high barrier housing. It's the, it's, it's those type of arguments where you really have to take into account the entire situation and, and, and don't try to rule with a one answer. Really filter it down and get to the truth of what you're looking for and then be able to, to rule from that perspective. Thank you.
Ms. Trigo?
Thank you. We have a severe health and safety issue as it relates to unsanctioned camping. There are currently restrictions on what the county can do on land they do not own or lease. I will support efforts to transfer high-risk lands from, to Deschutes County. We need to work to reduce the extreme fire risk, the land degradation, and the loss of public access to the lands due to encampments. We can transfer high-risk lands and create county codes that we may need to change over time. So I think adjusting those codes, as Commissioner Chang mentioned, and if they're not working, we change them to make sure they are working. The folks living in unsanctioned camping, even they know they're not going to be able to stay where they're at. They know they have to leave and we have to have places for them to go. We have churches that are working in this area. We have private landowners and as long as the rules are in place and it's safe and it, it doesn't put neighboring property owners at risk, I am in favor of allowing RV parking on private lands.
Thank you. This next question is a two-part question, so when you finish answering the first, I'll ask the second. And if it's okay, Kim, I'd like to give them 90 seconds on each, if we could. And the questions are this, well, I'll start with the first one. What would be your plan to address the fentanyl crisis here in Deschutes County? And Mr. Imhoff, we'll start with you.
I'm going to finish writing down the question.
You bet.
Will you tell us the second question afterward?
Sure. I'll tell you the second question. Are you satisfied with how the resources of Measure 110 are being dispersed?
Now we got to write more.
Now, that's right, take your time.
Will you repeat that second question again?
Absolutely. Are you satisfied with how the resources from Measure 110 are being allocated in the county?
Okay. I got three minutes, so that gives me plenty of time.
You got plenty of time.
All right. So, um, a couple of things. Uh, there was a, um, I know there was a recent, uh, piece of legislation that just came through that specifically addresses, it's called an unclassified misdemeanor, that's what 110 did. I know that, that a lot of the posturing and, and reorganization of 110 that's happening is specifically to try to address the fentanyl crisis since Volnamo County being the first county to declare it. I would say that I don't know, um, I don't really know anyone that's on fentanyl, so to have a specific, uh, plan with this is how you stop fentanyl use. I mean, I think a lot of people, I, the people that I do know that, that are homeless that have been on fentanyl and methamphetamines, they talk about this crossover. It's a very complicated issue and it's not an issue that I intend to or expect to be the expert on. What I do is I expect to meet with, for instance, our sheriff and say, hey, how is the code department handling this crisis? And, and, you know, when you have officers that have to be constantly carrying different, uh, I believe it's Narcan, that they have to carry so that if they do come in contact with fentanyl, they can immediately give themselves a shot so they don't overdose. Um, that's a very dangerous position to always be in as a law enforcement officer. And so I would go to them and say, hey, how, how do you, how do you think we should fight it? I'm not going to sit as a county commissioner and try to pretend that I know the solution. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go to people, drug and alcohol counselors, hey, how do you counsel people away from fentanyl use and away from drug use and making better life choices? And, and again, making sure we have those facilities for the people that want to detox. So I'll kind of answer both questions, I guess collectively. Am I satisfied with the resource management for 110? I am not. Um, I'm not because I feel like 110 in and of itself was, is just an abject failure. To legalize drugs in any capacity and, and take away the consequence, it just opened us up for a whole myriad of other problems. I understand the intent of it. I believe the intent was to, uh, reduce the amount of criminal, uh, amount, amount of criminality that came from drug use and so that we, you didn't have somebody who had a, you know, an ounce of marijuana on them all of a sudden serving a long sentence. I mean, I understand the intent of it. The problem is that we always have these unintended consequences that oftentimes get overlooked. So we say, hey, this is a So we say, hey, this is a good idea. What's the end product? It's rarely a good idea. So I do believe that throwing money at addiction is also not the solution. I think that creating a collaborative path forward with those that are professionals in drug abuse counseling, as well as alcohol counseling, those who are mental health professionals, and then obviously people who are really good with determining in short order where the best place is for funds to go to give us the most traction, to pull the most people out of addiction.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chang.
Yeah, thank you for this question. First off, what's my plan for the fentanyl crisis? We've got to work on supply, we've got to work on demand. On the supply end, I'm actually going to call out Kent Vander Kamp from the Central Oregon Drug Enforcement Team, sitting in the back there. Remarkable group of law enforcement officers who are busting drug dealers, working their way up the chain and busting the kingpins every day in our community and doing an awesome job at that. Thank you very much for that work. We can't just try to cut off the supply. We need to deal with the demand side of the equation, too. The legislative package that just came through the legislature, House Bill 4002, is going to do great things in catching people early in their trajectory, their pathway of drug addiction and criminal behavior, and deflecting them out of that system into treatment. So that's a good thing, helping people who are already partway on that pathway. The Adult Treatment Court that we used to have in Deschutes County, but which is so resource-intensive that we can't sustain it anymore at this point in time, also caught people very late in their trajectory of addiction and criminal behavior and did a great job of salvaging, helping a lot of those people recover and walk the pathway out of addiction. But what I really am excited about is prevention efforts. And the county has invested in a whole bunch of prevention efforts. One of the most exciting, I think, is the Healthy Schools Partnership that we have entered into with the Bendle Pine School District, which is providing various kinds of peer supports, curriculum in health education classes, and just a better social climate in schools that will help to prevent kids from starting to use illegal substances in the first place. So that's a little bit on how we can tackle the fentanyl crisis. Speaking specifically to the treatment resources that Measure 110 made available to our communities. Measure 110 did two things. It did decriminalize possession of small amounts of controlled substances and it resulted in some amazing investments in our treatment capacity in our community, in organizations like Best Care, like Ideal Options, like Deschutes County Behavioral Health, who are all, with those funds now, able to do a much better job of helping people with accountability and structure and supports to recover from addiction.
Thank you. Ms. Trigo.
So we are facing a crisis in Deschutes County. I definitely would have supported the Deschutes County State of Emergency that was passed by the county commissioners. That's an example of where you need to partner with state and federal government for funding. And that state of emergency actually allows that to happen. It opens up some of those doors in order to help with treatment. I really think that we can do so much more as a county. We can lobby for amending exclusionary policies where people who are incarcerated lose their healthcare benefits. So if we can get that inclusionary policy removed, they can have their health benefits pre-trial, which gives them access to all of this treatment and 30 days prior to their release. And so that is one thing that I would advocate for doing. We also have a severe crisis of workers in this area. And so we really need to make sure that we invest in programs and initiatives that assist and incentivize recruitment, training, and placement of drug prevention providers and that will work with local and under-resourced communities. The county jail is our frontline treatment center right now, and we just cannot have that happening. Every person in this room knows someone who's struggled with drugs and alcohol. And I'm not for the hammer, I'm for pathways out of addiction. And we just really need to, 110 was an epic failure. They had funding and when they decriminalized drugs, small amounts, not legalized, they had funding that they just never used. I mean, it was so, the amount that they had compared to the people seeking treatment. And what's happening in Portland right now is they are, all of these people do not have access to treatment. And I was helping someone in this area and they got off the drugs. The next part was the alcohol and they had to wait three months to get into alcohol treatment. So we need to provide sustainable funding for treatment. We need to restart our drug courts. We need to increase welfare holds, 72 hours. And we need treatment and detox capacity. And we need to fund sobering centers like our stabilization center that we have now.
As we see the need for mental health resources continue to grow in this county, do you believe that the Behavioral Health Department, along with its partners in this county, is big enough to handle the crisis as it is right now? And Ms. Trigo, we'll go with you again.
Our county health department is amazing. They have a whole bunch of very hardworking people in the county out there on the front lines helping people. The health department's budget is $80 million. And that's another example of where we need to partner with federal and state government to stabilize that funding stream so that we're not hiring people to provide these services for our most vulnerable populations. And then when that grant funding runs out, we have to let them go. And the next grant funding comes in, then those people are already off to another job. So it is a difficult situation and we need to ensure that the people who are in those positions right now stay in those positions. And as I mentioned, they do do a very good job of bringing that funding in. In fact, they're an example for the rest of the departments in the county on how to do things right. So I support the county health department and I will advocate strongly as your next county commissioner to bring in additional funding for the Deschutes County Health Department.
Thank you. Mr. Chang.
I would 100% agree with Judy that our Behavioral Health Division is amazing. They are leaders in the state on so many things. The Crisis Stabilization Center that they stood up three years ago after many years of stalling by past boards of commissioners is an example for communities across the state and across the nation, for example. Is it big enough? Let's talk about the budget. So Judy gave the numbers for the entire Health Services Department, including public health, behavioral health. The Behavioral Health Department is the majority of that $80 million. But the county general fund investment in our Behavioral Health Division is probably about 5%. The remainder is federal and state money. So the tiny little amount of local tax dollars that we put in leverages 20 times that amount of money. And in order to maintain that level of service and in order to keep them leaders innovating in health services across our state, we need to not just guarantee that funding, but probably dial it up a little bit. The stabilization center that I mentioned, we still don't have reliable long-term funding for that, even now, three years in.
Mr. Imhoff.
So first, let's specifically address the Behavioral Health Department. I have met, over the course of my 22 years here, I've met a number of people who work in that department. Exceptional people, they're gifted, they're skilled, and they're professional. We need more space and we need more staffing. I don't know how we get there as a county. I don't know if that is by creating more county buildings or if that is starting to target maybe a secondary health system to come in parallel to St. Charles and provide a little bit of competition in our market and take some of the pressure off of the St. Charles system by itself. I think it's also, as a county, another one of the situations that's been brought up to me is our ambulance response. South County, and I have a personal story which I won't share here, but if you call for help and help is 45 minutes away, oftentimes that's too late. And so I would tell you that it is really important to those who live in rural areas that we have some balance in that. And it's not only if you live in an urban area that you get quick responses. And I also think we need to make sure that we are very focused on funding for overall county health, not just the behavioral or mental health side of it.
Thank you. Wildfire season in this state and certainly in central Oregon has become as predictable as the four seasons anymore. Do you think the county has a role, a larger role, in wildfire protection, wildfire prevention? Or are we doing a pretty good job as it stands right now? And Mr. Chang, let's start with you.
I live this stuff. For the last 25 years, I've been a natural resource professional who has worked in many different communities and here for over 20 years on helping to build community agreement around the thinning, brush mowing, and prescribed fire that needs to happen in our federal forest lands in order to make those federal forests healthier and more resilient and to prevent catastrophic wildfire from arriving at our doorstep in our cities and in our communities. What we need to do now, we need to continue that work. Hundreds of thousands of acres done, but we still need to do more. But what we need to do now, what we really need to focus on now is making our homes more resilient. We learned in the Labor Day 2020 fires that the thing that's most likely to light your house on fire is not the forest that's a mile away, it's your neighbor's house that's on fire. And your neighbor's house is much less likely to be on fire if you've implemented defensible space in the landscape around your house and if you've built your house with the most fire-resistant building materials possible and done little things like put fine mesh screening on the vents of your house. So the county has a really important role now, at this point in time, in helping our property owners, helping our homeowners to implement those home hardening measures to make their homes most resilient.
Mr. Imhoff.
Well, first, you can't talk wildfire without ladder field reduction. You have to have an aggressive plan to be able to reduce so when the fire does come through, it's not as destructive. Those are easier fires to put out because they don't burn as hot. One of the things that we know, and I have a number of studies that'll be available on my website to look at, but junipers, I burn juniper in my fireplace, they burn hot, burns really hot. And they're thirsty. And as they're thirsty, they pull surface water out. The studies continuously support my position on that. And I'm not going to go away from that. But what I will do is I'll correct my answer. The other night I said they drank 50 to 70 gallons. There is a lot of debate with how much they drink, but there's a number of studies that have measured studies that show somewhere between 35 and 50 gallons for a 13-inch juniper. So secondly, should the county have a larger role? Well, the county can only manage what is county land. So if the Forest Service is doing a horrible job managing their land or the BLM is doing a horrible job of managing their land or the Oregon Department of Forestry is doing a horrible job of managing their land, we are stuck with what they do. And we are also stuck with what they don't do. So some accountability, I want to continue. I think we need to continue to partner with all these organizations because they're in our county, right? So we need to have, as a county, we need to have a little bit more control over our resource management. Thank you.
Ms. Trigo.
So we're going to continue to have wildfires and we need to reduce the risks. The number one priority is to protect life and property from those risks and increase the ability to withstand and recover from wildfires. We need both a regulatory and a voluntary compliance approach. New development needs sufficient defensible space, safe evacuation routes, and we need to build with connectivity in mind when including fire breaks and buffers in high-density areas. We need to increase capacity in under-resourced and underserved areas. We need to consider and assess wildfire risk when planning and replacing public facilities and services. We need to locate those facilities and services outside of high-risk area, especially infrastructure that's going to be important to our recovery. We need post-disaster plans, coordination between state and local government. I'm also in favor of the Core Three Project, which will serve emergency operations for large-scale emergencies. The county's dedicated 300 acres and the state has contributed $9.5 million and they've raised $25 million thus far. Do I think we need to do more as a county? Yes, we have two guys working on it. That's who's in our forestry department, $2.6 million budget, two guys. So we do need to increase what we're doing at the county level.
All right, thank you. What can we do to help residents whose wells have run dry? And I guess, put another way, how can Deschutes County prevent further groundwater reduction as we continue to deal with one drought after another in an occasional good year? Let's start with you, Mr. Imhoff.
Did it look like I was prepared?
It looked like you were prepared.
So a lot of folks in Deschutes County have their wells running dry. The question is why? That's one question you always have to answer is why. The second question is how deep is your well? I know plenty of people in the South County, a lot of their wells are at 40, 50 feet deep, that's it. Well, you know you're not in the aquifer at 40 or 50 feet. I know other people in the East County and they're 350 feet deep. Here's what happened. They dried up, a lot of the wells dried up when our canal started getting piped by the irrigation districts. It was an unintended consequence. Last time we had our forum, I thought that there would be a good idea, which would be, let's run a perforated pipe next to it and run our winter water through the perforated pipe to refill people's surface wells. I don't know if it's the best idea, it's just an idea. How do we get water there? It's either that or you've got to drill all those wells deeper. So that's one thing. Why are they running dry? Another question. Yes, canals contribute. I think there's another contributing factor, which I know that Mr. Chang does not agree with, so he'll probably shake his head, which is junipers. So the junipers drink, they drink a lot, and they drink surface water, and they drink a lot. And there are multiple studies that show that when you do juniper abatement, the springs come back and a lot of times there's dry stream beds that become streams and the downstream flows of the river or the downstream flows of the river increase. It's a direct correlation. So we just have to study it and be okay with it and not be addicted to our own thoughts.
Ms. Trigo.
Over 1,200 wells have gone dry in the state over the last some months. Water in Deschutes County is of finite resources and given the fact that we're seeing declines in our groundwater, increases in demand, we need to collect and monitor the data to inform our management decisions. We need sustainability goals and data that is shareable. 80% of our water that is diverted is for irrigation. 10% is for municipal. 10% is for municipal use, and 10% is for commercial users. Groundwater declines are due to drought, pumping, and canal lining. So there's three reasons that the groundwater is declining in Deschutes County. We can mitigate future declines. We need to incentivize efficiency and conservation, the transfer of water rights, have water-sharing agreements, and design for the reuse of water and market-based solutions. Some of these programs are happening, but they're disjointed at best. We need to ensure that permit holders can share their water without losing their water right, and allow water districts to be able to share water between districts if they agree to. We need all the partners at the table to address and implement long-term solutions to our water shortages in Deschutes County.
Mr. Chang.
Let's start by differentiating between surface water and groundwater. We have done amazing work in the Deschutes Basin in the last 20 years to save water in agriculture through canal piping, through on-farm efficiency work, which has freed up tens of thousands of acre-feet of water for other farmers and for our river. All that conservation work in agriculture is not going to do anything to help our groundwater situation. So we've got to tease those things apart. Who uses groundwater in the Deschutes Basin? Our homes, our cities, our businesses inside our cities? Not farmers. Farmers don't really use groundwater in the Deschutes Basin. So what is important about that discussion of agriculture is that we need to do the exact same thing. We need to, we need our homes, our businesses, our cities to use less water so that our groundwater levels do not decline as fast as they have been. It is true that precipitation, lower precipitation in recent decades is the major reason. Too many straws in the ground, too much pumping, is the second biggest reason. Canal piping is a very localized impact on groundwater supplies. And if you were drinking shallow groundwater next to a canal before piping was happening, you were drinking untreated river water.
Thank you. On the question of water, and other resources as well, I'm interested in your thoughts on the future of destination resorts in this county. Where do you come down on their impact on the resources that we have in this county? And let's start with you, Ms. Trigo.
So destination resorts aren't allowed in Deschutes County right now. The problem is, prior to, the state actually had an overlay for destination resorts for the economy. And so those destination resorts that were platted and allowed in that overlay, I know you're probably talking about the one that filed 20 years ago for approval. They are going through a process, and it is under appeal. That was approved under the old rules, and so they were grandfathered in. New destination resorts, I do not believe, well, somebody asked me, do we need any more? And I don't think we need any more. Deschutes County economy has gone from sheep to cattle to timber to tourism. I think our tourism economy is sufficient enough at this point that we do not need to add any more destination resorts. Those that were allowed by the state, however many years ago, they are grandfathered in. And so as they go through that appeal process, the county's job is really to approve, make sure they meet the impact requirements. It's not really to approve a destination resort or not. So I'm not in favor of any more, and thanks for the question.
Yeah, and I think the question really is kind of directed at where you come down, whether or not you would support the state if it changed its outlook on destination resorts, understanding certainly that, yes, your job is to regulate once they do. But thank you, I appreciate that. Mr. Chang.
Just a couple of points of clarification. There are many people who believe that destination resorts are still allowed in Deschutes County right now, new destination resorts. We have a county destination resort overlay map. That's not a state map, it is a county-drawn map. And there are several people associated with the destination resort eligible properties who say they do still have the right to develop a destination resort there, that that map, since it was created before the city of Bend reached 100,000 people, is still good. That's a whole big legal battle that's going to be playing itself out in the next few years. Question is, where is Deschutes County going to show up in that legal battle? Are they going to show up on the side of the people who say, oh, you know, give us this loophole so we can build more? Or are they going to show up on the side of the people who are concerned about the impacts to our open space, our wildlife habitat, our water resources, and frankly, to our roads and traffic situation? Do you want even more people arriving at the edge of your city every morning and then leaving, you know, snarling the edge of your city with traffic every night? So the county has a huge role to play in determining whether there will be more destination resorts or not. This is actually something that is being addressed in our comprehensive plan right now, if people want to comment on that.
Mr. Imhoff.
So, as a county, you asked the question, should we approve more destination resorts? The truth is, is that every one of these decisions ends up getting referred back to Luba anyway. So the Land Use Board ends up making decisions that ultimately comes back, and you see this back and forth that is played out. I would ask a question, which is, what do you think our economy in central Oregon would look like minus Sun River, Pronghorn, Eagle Crest, and Blackview? Would we still have 100,000 people here? Would we still have a lot of the small businesses that those people come to shop at, and Sisters? And Sun River, I mean, they've grown enough to increase in commerce. I am not a fan of just building for the sake of building. I'm not a fan of not, I really feel like we need to be good stewards of the land. The question is, can we be good stewards of the land and have new properties be developed? The specific one, without naming it, that I know that Judy was talking about as well, I will tell you that as many opponents as he has, he spent a lot of years fighting to make sure that he had purchased the right amount of water to properly irrigate the golf courses and the other plants he had for that property. You can disagree with it, but he went through the right steps. And I think that that's one of the things that we have to focus on, is we have to say, okay, how reliant are our businesses on the tourism? And then, would it be a wise move to eliminate tourism and act like we can actually lock the gate behind us?
Thank you. I'm sure you all are very familiar with this next issue that has come up probably a few times over the years, but do you support the idea of a five-member commission here in Deschutes County? What would be the advantages and the disadvantages of having two more members on that board? And let's start with you, Mr. Imhoff.
Do I support a five-member commission? That's not my call. It is the voters of Deschutes County get to decide whether or not we have three or five. I'm okay with however they decide. That's part of the way that it works. If we go to a five commissioner, if that's what we ultimately get to as five commissioners, I would suggest that, and I suggested it previously, we need to have zones, and very specific zones. I am not a proponent of at-large positions because I feel like the at-large position all of a sudden creates some sort of bias on that commission because two people would link together that potentially from the same zone. So I do not like that. I like five unique zones. I don't like them necessarily to even be based on population, as Mr. Chang spoke about the Hood River, the way that they did it. I think that people who live in Bend don't necessarily understand the struggles of the people who live in Le Pine, who live in Sisters, who live in Milliken, who live in Cricket River Ranch, or Terrebonne, or Redmond. So there are so many nuances, and I believe as a commission, it's our responsibility to make sure that our people feel represented. And I heard prior to this that people don't feel underrepresented, and that is not consistent with what I've heard when I go around the county and have conversations with the people. They feel like, especially if they're in the rural parts of the county, they feel like they've been forgotten. And it's our responsibility to give them a voice and make sure that it's balanced. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Trigo.
So there's a group of people going around gathering signatures, trying to get this on the ballot, whether to go to five county commissioners. I will support the will of the voters. I, like Mr. Imhoff, do not agree that they can not be done by district. And so we could very well end up with five commissioners from Le Pine, five commissioners from Redmond, and I don't think that would be healthy for the community, or five commissioners from Bend, for that matter. I don't think that would be good representation for the county residents. I also don't think it'll be easier for five commissioners to talk to 210,000 people than it is for three commissioners to talk to 210,000 people. Either way, it's a hard job. I answer my phone every time it rings, and it's, a lot of this job is constituent services. So you need to know how to provide those constituent services. And so if it does pass, I will support the will of the voters, but I don't agree with that without some changes to the way it's written right now.
Mr. Chang.
We're going through an evolution right now at Deschutes County. In 2022, the voters of Deschutes County voted overwhelmingly, over 60%, to convert our county commissioner positions from partisan to nonpartisan positions. And we're getting, we're having a whole different kind of election this May as a result, which I think is great, because there are 65,000 non-affiliated independents, libertarians, Green Party people, et cetera, not registered D or R, who will get a ballot for a commissioner for the very first time this year in May, who never had real meaningful input on county commissioner races. On the five commissioner ballot measure, I do think it comes down to questions of representation. We have 210,000 people in Deschutes County right now, we only have three commissioners. It is, we are all at large, it's very difficult to be connected with 210,000 people. So if we had five commissioners, if they were zoned, I support the idea of zoning as Every person in Deschutes County would have better access, and I think better representation by their commissioners. And if they weren't getting better representation, then it's because of the failure of the person who was holding that seat, not because they weren't provided, not because people weren't provided better access.
The sheriff's office here in Deschutes County does fall into the county budget, does it not?
Yes.
With all of the settled lawsuits, the questionable purchases, the growing budget, when or ever is it okay for the county commission to step in and give its thought on that agency? Mr. Imhoff, let's start with you.
All right. Let me finish writing your question again.
Okay.
You catch me off guard, and I'm not writing very fast. Is it okay, if I understood the question right, is it okay for the county commissioners' office to step in and adjust, increase the budget for the sheriff's office?
You control the budget. You obviously don't control an elected sheriff.
Correct.
When is it appropriate to step in and give your opinion on what might be going on, and then potentially threaten to adjust things accordingly?
Well, let me start with just a little bit of that wording. I don't like threatening anybody, so I think that that's not a path forward for me. What I do think is, I think that if you, because I do know that the commissioners do work very closely with the sheriff and the budget committee as well, I think that you need to find out, again, everything comes down to whys for me. Why do you need more money? Where did the money go that you had? It's questions that we ask our children when they come home with no money and they need more money for food. Now, my boys eat a lot, that's how that works for me. But in the world of the sheriff's office, look, if our deputies need better pay in order for them to come in more in line with what other counties are paying their sheriffs, we don't want to lose our good law enforcement officers. So what do we have to do to be competitive? What is, like, those are some of the things where you start to go, okay, look, we have to have honest conversations. Now, that being said, if there's wasteful spending, absolutely you call the sheriff on the carpet for wasteful spending. But if you have the relationship built with them, where you're able to give and take, and he knows, hey, I'm your fan, I want you to be successful, and I want the sheriff's office to be a pillar of our community, that young children growing up say, I want to be a deputy, or I want to be the sheriff. That's great. I mean, I think that that's probably every law enforcement officer's dream, is that their kids say, hey, I want to be one too. Unfortunately, we live in an environment that has spent a lot of time beating them up for doing a good job. Now, yeah, there's a few bad apples. Yes, you spoke about some lawsuits, some other things, there are some bad apples. But that's such a small percentage of our law enforcement, that I think that it's our responsibility as just citizens, not commissioners, just citizens, to support our law enforcement all the way through.
Thank you. Ms. Trigo.
So the sheriff's department has a $65 million budget. Our last budget committee and the county commissioners approved raising the tax rate at the top for the sheriff's department. They were able to keep it very low for years and years. There's nine different taxing districts, and only two are not at the maximum rate. So I think it comes down to communication with the sheriff's office. I don't think that they're wasting money. I think they had a very good argument coming forward to the budget committee and to the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners requesting that funding. They had a plan laid out for what they were going to do with that funding. There was $500,000 that they were requesting from the transient room tax in addition to raising that cap, and that was not approved. And let's face it, sheriff's office are expensive to run. They have cars, they have employees, I mean, it just costs millions and millions of dollars just for the equipment. I fully supported funding the sheriff's department at that rate. I even was in favor of the $500,000. I got voted down on that. But we really need to, it's communication with the sheriff's office. I think we have a good relationship, and when those things have come up, I've just gone and asked what the deal is, and they give me the data and the information that I need to make a decision.
Very good. Mr. Chang.
It is the responsibility of the budget committee and the Board of Commissioners to approve the sheriff's budget, and that should not just be a rubber stamp exercise. We should scrutinize the budget carefully, make sure that the services being offered, the employees being supported are the ones that we need. And I would say, for the most part, that the sheriff's office is really doing an excellent job. The staff, the sworn officers, they are great people, providing very important services for our community. We have had some problems in the last couple of years, and unfortunately, a number of the problems with the sheriff's office come from the very highest levels of the sheriff's office. The litigation that has cost us millions, you know, several million dollars in HR lawsuits, those came from the sheriff himself. And Judy mentioned raising the assessed property tax rate last year. This came, this was sort of like a boomerang or ricochet from lowering the assessed property tax rates about five, six years ago. It was, there was a fad back then. And, you know, that came back to bite us, you know? Lowering those assessed rates so much back then led us to hitting the wall last year.
This is a question that comes from a resident in Le Pine. They're talking about the plowing and the grading of their roads down there. This is a fast- This is a, this is a fast-growing area of the county and yet many down there feel, and we hear it at the television station as well, many feel they're kind of a left-out child in all of this. Where do you come down on the responsibilities of the county when it comes to taking care of their roads, be they paved or gravel? And Mr. Chang, let's start with you.
Yeah. Let me first start by saying, driving around in South County, you know, which I do a lot, I have a lot of people to connect with and visit, the roads are in terrible shape. They are, you know, every side residential street full of potholes. And it is really embarrassing for me as county commissioner that that is the condition. Our, the county road department manages 800 miles of county roads. And there's a whole bunch of roads that people wanted to build that we refused. We said, we will not build and maintain roads in those areas. Some of those folks have created special road districts, which oftentimes are, they can be better or worse run than the county roads. But 800 miles, and a really important thing to understand is that the county roads does maintenance with gas tax money. And we have seen in the last decade or so, more fuel-efficient cars, reduced gas tax revenue, which is leaving them less and less money to manage those 800 miles of roads. And I think that some of the horrible conditions that you see are a result of that. So the question is, what we really need is we need legislative action this next session to fix our road maintenance funding programs so that we don't hear, oh, we're not going to plow the passes this winter from ODOT. We need that road maintenance funding fixed.
Ms. Trejo.
So it's a legitimate concern. The road department's budget is $32 million. They really need to increase that funding and they can get grant funding. It doesn't have to be an increase in gas tax. There are different funding streams that they can tap into for the maintenance. I think it needs to be prioritized. There's the incorporated area, that's the city part, and then there's the unincorporated. So we need to identify which roads those are. Up towards Sisters, they actually do a great job of grading the roads. And the other incorporated areas don't. So sometimes it isn't even a county road that people are complaining about when they call you. I do think we need to prioritize the rural communities. I'm a rural community gal and we need to ensure that those roads are clear for the school buses going by, picking up children out in the country and taking them to school. We have people trying to get to work and it's ruining their cars. So I do think we need to prioritize the rural areas of the county and partner with the incorporated areas in the cities as well.
Thank you, Mr. Imhoff.
So I did actually a little bit of research on this one today just because I was kind of curious how our road systems, like what the schedule was, because there's different goals depending on the year with what some of the achievements are that they're aiming for. And so I think there's about 100 miles of road about this year that they're trying to get to that needs some combination of resurfacing or paving. What I would say is that, first of all, the fact that we have a gas tax and not a mileage tax has always been something that I don't understand. Because if it's a mileage tax, every vehicle's on the road and every single vehicle that's on the road is sticking, doing this, you know, differing levels of damage maybe based on weight. But they're still using the road, they're still running the road, they're still driving through little dips that become potholes and pushing water down, which knocks the asphalt out, right? So we understand how potholes come to be. I've hammered my truck a couple of times through a pothole. They're brutal. And they're more brutal the further south you go. So what I would say for my plan, if I had my druthers, I would make a push for the change in legislation at the state level. Obviously, we incorporate that at the county level. And so it's a little bit driven that way. I don't feel, I think it puts an unfair burden on us as a county if we do a mileage tax specifically as a county because the problem that we face is that where do we get our funding, number one? And number two, how does it, does it disproportionately affect people that drive around Deschutes County? And then if you're from Portland and you're hanging out in Sun River and you live in Sun River four months a year, you know, how does it affect yours? So that's why I say it would require a balanced approach.
Very good. I want to make sure we have time. I'm going to push this over by a couple of minutes, so I apologize for that, for our closing statements, if I can. Mr. Chang, let's start with you and your closing statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm asking for your vote for Deschutes County where the people who work in our community can afford to live here, where we have homes we love and we don't have to sacrifice our farms, our forests, and our high desert to get those homes. Where we leave the state in helping people struggling with mental health and addiction challenges to recover and rejoin our community, where we are safe from both wildfire and outrageous insurance premiums, where there is enough water for our farms, rivers, homes, and businesses, and where there are enough parks, trails, and river play spots for both our residents and our many visitors. I've spent the last three years learning the ins and outs of the county government so that I could deliver on all those goals. It's been my pleasure digging into how the solid waste department or the community justice department work and how we can best steward and invest the tax dollars that you entrust us with. I'd like to continue my work, really our work together for the people of Deschutes County and would be honored if you would vote for me again this year.
Ms. Trejo.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the City Club for having this. I really appreciate it. I am concerned about leadership in the county. There were 1,500 neighbors who signed a petition to oppose a sex offender program that was going to be put in a neighborhood filled with children, parks, and schools. I believe that the county needs to listen to their constituents. I am concerned about leadership in the county and my opponent not wanting to take a vice chair leadership position with the county commissioners. I am concerned that things just aren't getting done quick enough, fast enough. There's not enough partnerships. My opponent said Sisters was an example of a failed community when they were trying to locate a homeless shelter. I don't think that's good partnership with the communities. And I have worked many years in this area coordinating, cooperating, and partnering with nonprofit, public, and private sector people. My three priorities will be to solve the homeless crisis in Deschutes County, to increase mental health services, and to address our lack of affordable and middle-income housing. Just as we crave the freedom of our landscapes, we want the best for our families, friends, and small businesses. My experience, years of service, and my heart for seeing the best in our community makes me the best choice for Deschutes County Commissioner. I would ask for your vote on May 21st. And if you want more information on my campaign, please visit friendsofjudiTreo.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Imhoff.
Well, first, I want to thank Brian for his voice of support for our campaign. I had the pleasure of spending some time talking to him and I told him that as part of my closing comments today, I wanted to honor him for the sacrifice it took to file everything that he's had to go through that we've all had to go through. I know what that part of it takes and the sacrifice because you're standing up for something you believe in. So I give you my word, Brian, that I will represent you well. And so that being said, I will tell you that I can't speak for anybody up here that is opposing my candidacy for it. But what I'll tell you is that I do not want to be a commissioner for personal gain. It is a tremendous sacrifice for me to be a commissioner. I sacrifice a lot of much more comfortable living and much more time with my children and much more time with my grandchildren. And so I don't want to take it lightly because I know that both of my opponents also make tremendous sacrifices to be here. So that being said, previously and multiple times, you'll hear me say, my friends. That's all of you. I don't care if you vote for me or not. It doesn't matter. I'm friends with anybody in Deschutes County. And if I haven't met you yet, we're just not, we just haven't met yet, but we're still friends. You reach out to me, you reach out to me on my website, you say whatever it is that you need to say. I have ears to listen. I got broad shoulders. And most of the time, it's pretty hard to get me angry. So I will listen to you. I will listen to your concerns. It doesn't matter what edge of the county you're on. If you're, you know, in downtown Bend, all the way to any edge, I'm available. I will be as available as I can. I will be principled. I will have a smile on my face unless I'm hungry. And I wanted to let Judy know because Judy mentioned that Phil didn't take vice chair. I will take vice chair. So that's, just wanted to clarify that.
I was vice chair.
Oh, well, maybe I heard it wrong. But for me, anyway, I would love to have the vice chair position. So thank you.
And thank you to all three of you, as I mentioned at the very beginning of this forum. My hat is off to you for putting yourself out there for this. This is not an easy thing to do and it just gets harder if you win. So I appreciate that. I appreciate your concern for this community, your dedication to this community, and your friendship with this community. It means a lot to all of us. And that's going to do it for us right now. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters of Deschutes County for putting this on. Much appreciated. As well as the City Club of Central Oregon for hosting this forum. Keep in mind, folks, your vote is your voice. That's it. That's the only voice you get. You can email these guys and gals all you want, but that vote is what really matters at the end of the day. So you're going to get your ballots around May 1st in the mail. You need to make sure that they're postmarked by the 21st for that vote and voiced account. And if you're looking for any additional information on any of the candidates who are running in Deschutes County, it's very simple. It's vote411.org. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We do appreciate it. And again, thank you, candidates, for being here.
Thank you.